Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023. Out of respect for the decorum of the meeting, I'll ask everybody to please silence or turn off their phone at this time. The mayor is not going to be able to join us this evening. He did say that it is a family emergency, which has caused him to not be here. He does send his regrets for this evening. Moving forward, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, we will take one minute of silence and remembrance of September 11th. And then we'll move on to our regularly scheduled agenda items. So at this time, I'll ask everyone to please stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask everyone why don't we sit in the silence? I think that'd be best for us all. And we'll take a minute for remembrance of the nine eleven events, those who lost their lives in service, those who were called to service that day and then lost their lives. Thank you. So our future meetings will be the write-in election deadline on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, at 12:00 noon here at the town office. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 25th, here at 7:00 PM. The town of Emmitsburg elections will occur on Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at seven, from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. The voting site will be on Main Street again in the former town office near the PNC Bank. The Board of Commissioners meeting next will occur on October 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM. That will be available via Zoom as well as it'll be open to the public here in the town office. So I turn now to the meeting minutes for July 10th, 2023, and for August 21st, 2023. Let's look at the 10th first. Does anybody have any modifications they'd like to see related to the July 10th meeting?
I did have one. I did submit it ahead of time.
She did. We just did not have time to verify it. I don't see there's any issue with adding just that brief sentence.
Okay. Could we accept the minutes as presented and then have an addendum for our next meeting with the modification? Or do we need to wait for the next meeting?
No, you can approve with the modification.
Okay, all right.
So might want to yourself. Do you have the the actual language?
Um, I do in an email. I have it. I think it was just one statement.
Right. There it is. Commissioner Bowman-Pallett would like to add at what constitutes a water sewer activity within the part of the minutes where we were talking about the water fund.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good. So is there a motion to accept the meetings? That's right, the minutes from the meeting of the July 10th, 2023 meeting as modified. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, second by Commissioner Bowman-Pallett, is running for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero while commissioners present. Is there a motion? Sorry, any modifications anyone's keen on seeing for the August 21st, 2023 meeting before we have a motion for it? Hearing none, therefore, is there a motion to accept the August 21st, 2023 meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowman-Pallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Deputy, we turn to you for the police report.
Yeah. Still myself and Stephanie Barlow in the unit. We used four annual days, one sick day, and had two training days. There's been promotions Sergeant Hager, who we, Sergeant is now promoted to Lieutenant. He's still a part of the unit. Sergeant Welsh is now our sergeant. Corporal Smith is under him. We had handled the National Night Out. Everything went well with that, as long as, as well as Mount St. Mary's Park event. Myself and Barlow had in-service training, eight thirty and eight thirty-one. We've also had several police one online trainings that we completed. We have no trouble with our cars, no issues. We handled 225 calls per service, three criminal arrests, forty-seven traffic stops, and twenty win cards completed.
Thank you. Any questions for the deputy at this time? Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we now turn to the town manager for the town manager's report.
Evening. This will be the town manager's report for July 2023. I'll just highlight some of the key areas related to streets. Staff sealed some cracks on Irishtown Road. They sped up or set up the speed trailer on Irishtown Court and Brookfield Drive. Staff picked up a damaged street light in front of Five West Main Street as a result of a traffic collision. They also took the flags down off the streetlight poles. Related to parks, the staff installed some minor new equipment at the splash pad and took two loads of small riprap stone to disc off hole number ten. Related to the water, at the time of this report, Rainbow Lake was six inches below the spillway level. At sixteen point six feet is the spillway level. However, as of September 1st, the lake was fifteen point three feet, which is one point three feet below the spillway level. We continue to monitor the levels pretty much daily. The lakes are the wells, excuse me, have dropped some since the July report. Again, we're still monitoring it. We are in the voluntary conservation of water, so we're asking everybody to do their part. We need to somehow reduce some of the flow to town. Just every little bit helps. Water production and consumption, we produce an average of two hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and one gallons per day, consumed an average of two hundred and seventy-three thousand and eighty-four gallons per day. The amount of backwash water in the month of July is approximately sixteen point two percent. We purchased zero gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in the month of July. As mentioned before, the towns halted obtaining water from Mount St. Mary's until further notice. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine gallons and consumed two hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty-four gallons per day, which meant that about nine point five four percent of the wastewater was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in July. We received two point six inches of precipitation, and by the end of July, we had a deficit of five point one eight inches. Trash will remain, trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of September. Just some noteworthy items. We did implement phase one water restrictions on August 1st. Staff continues to work on a water conservation plan that MDE has requested. We are working with a contractor to have the backwash pond pumped out to avoid violating the TSS levels. Staff completed the CCR certification sent to the state. Staff is working on GIS for marking water and sewer repairs. Vibration analysis was completed at the pump station. Staff assisted the contractor with sewer lining on DePaul Street, Federal Avenue, and Bunker Hill. Steve, staff weed ate and weed killed to prepare for MS4 outfall inspections at various outfall pipes eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, and thirty-six. And they conducted their monthly maintenance and repairs checks at the wastewater treatment plant and pump stations. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager related to the town manager's report? Okay, great. Thank you. We're moving on. All right. At this time, we turn to the town planner for the town planner's report.
Good evening. It's a town plan report from August. We issued eight zoning permits and five cross-connection permits. Out of the zoning permits, the three inaudible ones are a change of use for the Mount St. Mary School of Health professions. One for the season shrine museum entrance and a zoning permit for Federal Stone Industries. And provided three major zoning verification slash opinion letters to two two five Saddle Hill Parkway for to verify that a goodwill store would be permitted there and to verify permitted use within the town school boundary at one six six one seven Old Emmitsburg Road. And verified permitted use of a shed or garage on the lot in on Irishtown Road. Some ongoing developments to Federal Stone got their zoning permit on August 23rd, and we have the pre-construction meeting pending. Same thing for Saddle Hill Plaza or the Villasugres project. And for the season shrine museum entrance, I had daughters of charity ministries. The pending item is the deed of easement, which is on the agenda for tonight. Zoning permit was issued on August seventeen, twenty twenty-three. And the town fit out project for our daughters of charity ministries was a zoning permit was issued on August 21st, twenty twenty-three. And like I mentioned earlier, the Mount St. Mary's School of Health professions, their permit was also issued. For stormwater management, a couple of wayside signs were installed at the Saddle Hill Bates and retrofit project. The pending item for this is the maintenance contract. And for the MS4 permit requirement, there was an annual employee training that involved GGS training by Barton and Judas for water and sewer leak reports on August 30th. A couple of grants, the CBT Trust 3G grant. We closed out the Saddle Hill Basin retrofit final report on the 31st of last month, and we're working on another grant called Keep Maryland Beautiful application to be submitted in November.
Thank you. Any questions for the town planner related to the town planner's report? No, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. It's great to hear the university's rolling in, and the daughters are expanding their museum. Do we want to look at grants or no? Do we want to move on? Does staff have any interest in seeing that presented?
That's up to the board if they want to hear any of the key points on the grant.
Anybody want to hear about the updates on the grants?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Shaw's here. She's like, let's do it.
She's not getting away that easy.
Good evening. I am Madeline Shaw, the grants administrator for the town. I'm just going to highlight a few things from my grants administrator report. I'm just on page twenty. The Kremery Road Pump Station project, the sign should be installed next week out front, so that may drum up some questions. The sign just says that the USD is funding the project, and they're hoping to begin fieldwork in October. So that'll be coming up soon. And then for the water clarifier project, permit approvals are anticipated by November 1st, maybe sooner, hopefully sooner. And then we'll go to bid for construction for that project. So the board should anticipate seeing that hopefully by the end of the year. Other bigger infrastructure projects. The North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project and DePaul Street Waterline Replacement Projects are currently in the design phase. We anticipate starting construction for DePaul beginning in 2024. And the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement will not probably start construction till fall 2024. We got funding number twenty-three dash twenty on page twenty-one, the Frederick County Tourism Council Main Street Cooperative Fund. We got $10,000 to purchase some new Welcome to Emmitsburg signs. I don't know if people have noticed, but we're missing one. And then some of the other ones are in pretty rough shape, so we're hoping to replace those soon. And then for pending grants, something else that might be of interest to the board is that we applied for money to get directional wayfinding signage at the town square. And those would just be signs saying, like, if you turn left or right, that's where the park is or the trails are. And so that's something we're working towards, too. Is there any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Appreciate it. Great news. Thank you for what you're doing. Okay. Do we want to hear the parking enforcement report? No? Is that okay to move forward beyond that? All right, very good. All right. We now turn to the commissioners and their comments. Commissioner Bowman-Pallett.
In light of nine eleven, I just wanted to, I was reflecting today that not only was this my, I just passed my thirtieth high school reunion, that happened already, but nine eleven was also a day where I lost a classmate that I went to school with, Mr. Alan Linton, who a big chunk of land is dedicated to him down in Frederick. So he is dearly missed, but in reflecting on that day, I do want to extend thanks to our local first responders for always being the helpers that are there whenever we need them with our deputies and of course vigilante host company, medical professionals, religious clergy, and so on. Anybody who fits into those helper categories, we want to extend a thanks. Likewise, I want to send a congratulations for the new expansion on the Satan Shrine. I'm looking forward to seeing it myself. And I wanted to for residents who have been stopping me and asking me questions and such, I just want to say, please, if you would, send emails to the entire town council. Come to public comment, if you will. So it is just not my lone voice so that we can, we can hear the collective voice of the community. I think that everybody has always been welcome here at public comment, so we'd love to see you. If you email the entire board, everybody, including the mayor, gets a copy, so it's really easy to do. And finally, this may be my last time serving with Commissioner Ritz, so I wanted to thank you for the one year I had the chance to serve with you, but you know, I did have a chance to work alongside of you a bit on the planning commission. And I've always been appreciative of your thoughtful insight and comments and careful consideration for what's, what's best for the town. I will miss working with you, but I wish you the best of luck towards your next leg of, of your adventure. Thank you. Hoping you'll get some more family time in there and a little bit less stress, maybe. Of course, I would say something similar to Mayor Briggs. He is not here tonight, but at the same time, I've, I've had a wonderful time serving next to Mayor Briggs and his thoughtful consideration for the community as well. So we're going to have a lot of changes, I guess, next month, and I just want to thank everybody who stepped up to run and those of us who are serving. It does take a village, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis. Thank you. Just to talk about nine eleven a little bit, and to give you a little history on what our little town did two or three days after nine eleven. The guys at the firehouse decided that we should take up a collection and send to the families of the firefighters in New York. And we did. So we decided that we'd stand out in front of the firehouse with a, with a boot for a day and see what we could do. And we actually did it for a day and a half. And this little town came up with $28,000 in, in two days or one and a half days that I had the privilege of taking to, to New York. And there was a career firefighter that we gave half of that money to who had eleven children and was, was killed. And the other family was in New Jersey, but he was a volunteer firefighter. Where is the Giants Stadium?
East Rutherford.
East Rutherford. He was a volunteer firefighter in East Rutherford, and he worked in the, the North Tower. And he came out, he got his whole office out and then went back in to help get others out, and he died in the collapse. This little town was able to come up with that amount of money in such a small amount of time. And it's, it's very touching. That just goes to show what, what we can do when we, we pull together, and we always do pull together. We don't always agree, but we always pull together when, when people need us. So that's my, my remembrance. I got a lot more, but that's okay. Friday night, the mayor and I attended the, it's called the Thurmont-Emmitsburg Community Show. I call it the Emmitsburg Thurmont Community Show, but that's and it's, it was a sixty-seventh community show. And back when, when I was a kid, it rotated between the two towns. Actually, when it was in Emmitsburg, it was held in this building. And it's, if for those who've never been there, it's just like an old time fair where the kids show their animals and there's all kinds of, the people take their canned goods in and their baked goods, and they're all judged, and it's, it's, it's really, really nice. It was, like I said, it was started sixty-seven years ago, and there's about a hundred volunteers that keep that going. But there's one family that really keeps it going, and that's the Rodman Myers family. If you go down Route 15, just past Orndorf Road, and you look down into the valley at the big farm that sits on the right, that's, that's the Myers Farm. And his family has kept that going. He started that when he was a senior in high school, the community show with his ag teacher, Bill Baker, who was also my guidance counselor, so that tells you how old I am. And they started that community show, and he has kept that going. His family is just a, you know, the backbone of that. So if you've never been there before, next year in September, please try to make it there. It's, it's just a fabulous event. It's, it's hard to believe that we still do something that, that good and for that long. And it's just a big piece of the Emmitsburg Thurmont history. So that's all I got. Sorry for being sort of long-winded. All good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney.
I also would like to thank the nine eleven responders for all the service they did on that day and, and everyone who helped afterwards. I also want to thank you for your service. You have, I mean, you've been here how many years now?
Nine.
Nine. Forget to catch up with me. But thank you for your service. I know it's, it's a lot of hours. People don't understand how many hours go into town of serving on the board. You have other boards you're on and besides, we used to have two meetings a month, and then we went down to one. Besides your, your board meetings you had, and then those other meetings you had in town. You belong to other organizations, but the, also, I want to thank, thank you for your service. I'm glad to have served with you. I'll tell the mayor when he gets back in the town. But the little league will be starting at Fall Ball in Memorial Park and Community Park, Eugene Marv's Park. I think the seventeenth of September, which is a Monday. They don't have their schedules out yet, but I think they're going to be done. So keep an eye out for the children. They'll be running around in the park. And come out and watch some ball games. We have Fall Ball going on. Thank you.
Mr. Ritz, I'll let you have the final word, so I wanted to yield my time to you. I just want to thank you for your service. Definitely an important thing that we've remembered, nine eleven.
East Street Grill, formerly Boyle Store, with stucco falling off of the building onto the sidewalk, potential safety hazard. Some residents concerned they might get struck.
Yes, I believe that the county has been fully notified of the current issues at that location. Town has fined or cited when appropriate, and we have addressed some of the issues with the owner. So it is something that is definitely on our radar and the county's radar, and we are working very hard to fix that property.
Good. Thank you. The next question was regarding permitting in town. Now, I've been here for a while, but I, I didn't really pay attention to meetings back, back in, back in the day, but I, I guess at one time, obviously, if something comes before the planning commission, there's a public meeting and, you know, people can come to a meeting. I'm assuming that prior to having a person in the position of town planner, that there was a notification similar to what we do. You know, if there's a Board of Appeals request, and we put the signs out and advertise it. Apparently, unless I got my story mixed up, what was explained to me that back in the day, there was more notification if somebody saw the permit, you know, to put up a fence or to do something along those lines. So I'm just throwing that out there. If that's something y'all want to consider, obviously, I won't, I won't be around, but I don't know if that would be a potential agenda item or not. Just, just throwing it out there that if, if we need to have more notification when it comes to individuals seeking permitting. I know most of the time, it's just a simple thing of neighbors being friendly neighbors and informing individuals of apparently there's a lack of friendliness regarding potential projects. That's all. So I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, well, we recognize the mayor's not here, so we aren't hearing the mayor's comments tonight. We anticipate them in his return, we hope, at our next meeting. We're going in order of those who signed up, so I invite Ms. Valerie Turnquist to step up. We don't do the home address thing anymore, so if you just please identify yourself and share whether or not you're a resident of town, and then you have your time.
I'm Valerie Turnquist, and I am a resident of Emmitsburg. I'm running for the Board of Commissioners, and I appreciate your vote next month. This month, actually, sorry, September. Along with the rest of you, I also wanted to acknowledge the anniversary of nine eleven. It's been twenty-two years, which is crazy. I remember sitting at work that day and hearing it come across radio, shocking. You know, every day, not just on nine eleven or anniversaries, but every day, we really should thank our service people. You know, our fire, rescue, and our police who put their lives on the line every single day. And they really don't get enough credit. They really don't. The Blues taking a bad rap these days, and EMS has, they were at my home probably three times in the last two months to come and check on my sister and transport her to the hospital, and I really, really appreciate that. I've been a resident of Emmitsburg for thirteen years, and I want to tell you a little bit about why I want to run for commissioner. You know, I could stand here and share my successes and my failures, but at the end of the day, that's not what's important. What's important is our community and how we move forward. The decision of this board impacts every resident of this town. The recent water increases are not sustainable, and that is one of the major reasons I'm here today. I have reviewed the proposed budget line by line, and there are ways to reduce spending to alleviate the burden other than putting it on the backs of the residents for the next five-plus years. Lately, there's been discussions on replacing parking meters and streetlights. And with our water fund deficit, we need to prioritize where our money is spent moving forward. We shouldn't have vacancies on vacant buildings on Main Street. That's a shame. You know, if we bring the Maryland Main Street program to Emmitsburg, we can encourage new businesses and growth and foot traffic for our current businesses and money for the town. I'm not going to take too much of your time, but my four children, all young adults, still live at home. We have no affordable housing in Emmitsburg.
Okay, is that better? We have no affordable housing in Emmitsburg. They can't even afford what's being built here today. So moving forward, when we bring in new communities and development, I think we should consider affordable housing for our young people and our senior citizens. You know, these recent developments, the houses were five hundred plus thousand. I mean, that's, that's not affordable. And finally, it's not about what I want or what the town wants, but I'm running for the citizens. I want to hear from any concerned citizen in this town, because what's on their mind is what will be on my agenda. I want to be the voice for the people, and I really, really want to address what affects every single resident in this town, whether it be housing, childcare, a business concern, whatever it may be. But thank you all for your service, and Joe, thank you for your long tenure here, and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. At this time, I invite Mr. Glenn Blanchard.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Glenn Blanchard. I am a resident of the town of Emmitsburg. I've been a resident for thirty-two years. I'd like to speak tonight on a couple of items. First, I read the paper that people complain a lot. people complain a lot of times about having not enough activities planned for teenagers in Emmitsburg. I disagree with this view. I have raised both my children in this community and have been well pleased with the number of activities that they have been able to participate in. Both my children learned how to swim on our community pool. My daughter has worked as a lifeguard in the same pool for four years. I know there are opportunities in the form of basketball, baseball, and other sports. The library offers many programs for young people on a variety of topics. The opportunities are there. People need to seek them out. On top of this, Emmitsburg has a great park system. Okay, hiking, walking, biking, frisbee golf, tennis, basketball. All these activities are offered our our well maintained parks. Our young people in town need to be encouraged to find these activities. Parents need to provide some guidance and leadership in helping children get involved. I understand that parents are working and they're very busy, including myself. But if we expect our young people in town to find these opportunities on their own, a lot of times we'll be expecting too much. It is easy to find the negative in a situation. But it takes hard work to find the positive. Next, I'm missing a chair here. I want to take time to thank Mayor Don Briggs for his many years of hard work and leadership for the town of Emmitsburg. I'm very grateful that I had time to work with Mayor Briggs in my role as a town commissioner. His leadership made the job a real pleasure and one that I very well. Now, I'd like to thank Commissioner Joe Ritz for his many years of long service to the town. Your head's starting to swell. I can had the pleasure of serving my Commissioner Ritz and enjoyed my time on the board as a commissioner. Lastly, I want to wish the two sitting town commissioners good luck in the race for the job of mayor. Good luck, good luck. I know that's how we serve well by either commissioner as they make the transition from commissioner to mayor. Democracy is served best by competition and a town has a very competitive race for mayor, as we have a very competitive race for town commissioner also. Thank you for your time and good luck. And as other two people have stated, I'm also running for town commissioner in two weeks. So I hope everybody shows up and votes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sure. We could bring you the mic if that would be amenable.
Okay, ready? All right.
So procedurally, you have a set amount of time. You have the lights here indicating your end time. Please identify yourself, share if you are a resident of the town.
Yeah. All right. My name's Dale Shire, Dale. That's what I'm running with. I've been here just be nine years this November. I live at the Seton Village, which is a blessing for anybody that does not have the amount of money to pay for rent. Because rent is high everywhere. And the housing is high. So I was thankful that I was able to get in there because it's subsidized by the federal government. So our tax dollars at work. I I had a brother that was well known here, Marshal Shire, which I miss greatly. And I helped him on projects in this town at a time. Just when I didn't have anything else to do. But I was unbelievable about the the price of water. And I want to find out how how do you calculate the price of sewer? Is it three or four times much? Do you know? No? All right, I'll find out later. Anyway, I just thought that was outrageous for that to happen happen that way. And I just hoping so it'd be some way that we can change the accounting. Because I have an accounting background and I've been retired for years due to my health. I mean, I I use a walker, but I can get around. And I'll still be open to help people, whatever they'd like to have. That's what I'm here to represent. I'm not here to represent myself. But I'm here to represent people. And I want to thank Joe for his time because I've watched you all on the TV and wish the other two fellows for the mayor, whichever one wins, great. I know it's at least we got the right to vote. I wish more people would come out to vote. I only missed one election so far that I remember, and I think I was sick at that time. And I knew Barbara Whedon real well. She served on the board. We used to talk all the time about voting and about how people don't come out to vote. Bless her that she passed away years ago. She was over there as a resident. So I really think we need to find some way to take that heavy burden off the taxpayers here. Because I know it's hurting everybody. And of course, I got a son that works here, Wayne, and he tells me about the water system all the time. He's a he's a good son. He's been here, I think he's going on thirteen years. He enjoys the job. And he's taken all the necessary courses to pass the test. I don't know. So I guess the most important thing is to get out and talk to the people and find out what they want done. And that's what I believe is the most important thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for running also. Okay, at this time, we turn to the agenda. We'll go through our list just so we have our understanding of what the process is. We do not have administrative business for this evening. We have no consent agenda items. We do turn to the treasurer for the treasurer's report, Mr. Ritz.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Sweeney, pardon me.
Cash activity for August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three was eight million, seven hundred thirty one thousand four hundred sixty seven dollars. Total deposits was six hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars. Total withdrawals was five hundred thirty nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars, which left us with the ending operating balance of eight million, eight hundred eighty two thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars. There are ten checks, ten big checks at the bottom. If anybody needs, has any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. We now turn to Mr. Ritz for the planning commission report.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's actually really nothing to report. The planning commission did not meet in August. However, as stated at the beginning of the meeting tonight, our next meeting is September twenty fifth. Sorry, my mind went blank there for a second. That's it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, so at this time, we turn to our agenda items and we have a proclamation for the mayor. We're going to postpone that until our next town meeting. So that will be something that we see in October. At this time, we have a proclamation for
We could skip that one, too.
I I wish we could, but it's worthy. Yeah, yeah, sorry, sir. So we go to agenda item number two for consideration proclamation honoring Commissioner Ritz. Staff, we turn to you for a moment. Is there anything we need to do procedurally? Do we just want it read or do we need to vote to accept the?
Yeah, so you'll read it and vote it, vote on it, excuse me, and then we will get the mayor to sign. Sabrina's got actual ones that go in a nice holder.
Okay, thank you. All right, so therefore, let it be hereby known, be known, gosh, I'm sorry. Let it hereby be known on the occasion of this recognition of services, this eleventh day of September twenty twenty three. The town of Emmitsburg hereby extends sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Joseph Ritz III for the services as a commissioner and planning commission liaison between the years of twenty fourteen and twenty twenty three. It is hoped that Mr. Ritz will continue to be a presence and resource to the Emmitsburg community for many years to come. So is there a motion to accept the recognition as presented?
I'm very proud to make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallett. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
I abstain.
You abstain. All right, the motion carries four. Four in favor, zero against, one abstention. And that is Mr. Ritz himself.
Thank you, everyone, for for doing that. I appreciate it. I didn't see that one coming, so. Thanks.
And by the way, Joe, you didn't win the six of hearts. The six of hearts did not go off.
Thank you.
So I just, he was trying to ask me before that. No, it did not go.
I was half tempted to leave the meeting had I won. You're stuck with me the rest of the night.
I'd follow you just to see what happened, you know. So we turn to our next agenda item. Agenda item number three for consideration proclamation declaring September twenty twenty three National Recovery Month. Staff, do you want me to read this one again?
Yes, usually typically we have some representatives here. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make it tonight, so just real quick, there's banners in the park. I don't know if anybody's seen it. If you haven't, have take some time to ride over there or walk over there and take a look. But yeah, if you'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
Okay. Proclamation, National Recovery Month, September twenty twenty three. Whereas recovery from mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness. And whereas treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective. And people can and do recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physical and emotionally. And whereas one in four teens report having abused or misused a prescription drug at least once. Four out of five people who use heroin started with recreational use of prescription painkillers. And whereas the town of Emmitsburg offers hope and resources, supports those in active addiction recovery and their loved ones. Whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize signs of a problem, and encourage those in need of help, seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services by calling nine one one for medical emergencies, by calling two one one to start the recovery process, get Narcan training, and encourage your community to get Purple certified. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to go purple to bring awareness and understanding of mental health and substance use disorders and to celebrate those living in recovery. And we hope to adopt this this eleventh day of September twenty twenty three. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. All commissioners present. Okay, we turn to agenda item number four for consideration. Approval of stormwater deed of easement for Seton Shrine Museum entrance. Staff, we turn to you at this time.
Yeah, so what you have here is the deed of easement for a stormwater drainage and management facilities on the property of daughters of charity ministries. This is an easement for a project that was approved by the planning commission in June of this year and involves redeveloping the entrance of and drop off location of of the area and installing permeable pavers as its subsurface stormwater management BMP. So the deed basically grants the town a perpetual stormwater drainage and management easement and the right of way as indicated in Exhibit A. And the deed confirms to the standards of of deeds approved by this board before. So for various other projects. So the applicant has already obtained all the necessary permits for this project. So this is the last item on their list. And this is the last last item before any surety from the county can be released to them. So staff recommends approval of this deed.
Staff does recommend approval. That's correct. Okay, so you want to make sure we're here. All right, are there any questions related to this item from the board? No, okay. Yeah, very straightforward. Thank you for making this easy and to the daughters, thank you for still investing in our community. This is a pretty neat facility that's going to be coming forward. Okay, so to phrase this properly, Ms. Willetts.
Yes.
So how is it best to phrase this for the motion?
Motion to approve the stormwater deed of easement for the Seton Shrine Museum entrance.
Okay. Staff, is there a motion for the deed of easement? So moved. Okay. I bailed you.
I'm grateful.
Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis eloquently and seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallett eloquently. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Staff, thank you again. We turn now to agenda item number five. I'm on page forty nine of sixty six.
So are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, I'm bringing this forth on behalf of our Director of Public Works. This is related to the parking during a snow emergency. Currently, the town has in place on page page, bear with me, fifty four was an ordinance that was adopted adopted by the Board of Commissioners in twenty fifteen that basically got rid of no parking during a snow emergency. And once Frederick County announces a snow emergency, the town used to have in place, you couldn't park on any town street. So the town streets could be adequately plowed, the safety of the 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 contractors that plow and town staff that plow and the safety of your vehicles because they're not on the road. However, in twenty fifteen, the board voted to designate certain roadways that you could park during a snow emergency plan. And if you hop back to page fifty two, I just highlighted the the town meeting minutes where this was discussed. So in in twenty fifteen, our September twenty first, twenty fifteen, it was recommended to add snow emergency signs in the cul-de-sacs of South Gate, North Gate, Emmett Gardens, Silo Hill, the entire area, Brookfield, Worthing's Way, Way Cross Court, and Creamery Way, the entire way. It came down to a vote and the commissioners asked for a little bit more time to take a look at it, to get more public input. So the board consented to bring it back to the next meeting, October fifth. It came back to the meeting, consideration of snow emergency modification plan. And so they added devised which areas would be affected. Again, it was South Gate, North Gate, Emmett Gardens, Worthing's Way, Creamery Way. Excuse me, Silo Hill, Brookfield, and Way Cross Court. There were some questions about Silo Hill. And then a motion was made to cross no parking during snow emergency. Modification passed. It'll be done with signage. And again, it was brought back. The the ordinance was put on hold. It didn't. It didn't basically say why it was put on hold. So then it was made official at the October nineteenth meeting. The board voted unanimously on the to keep to the modifications include keeping open the west side of Silo Hill and the area between two University Drive and Robin Yale Drive. The rest of them remained as designated snow emergency areas where you could park. The Director of Public Works and the water and sewer staff who come out and plow. It's a challenge, especially in those areas where cars aren't mode, are mode moved. It's not. It's not snow yet. They get plowed in. It becomes hazardous. Cars aren't being moved. We try to, you know, get alerts out, but it's not always effective. So we've requested to go back to what we had prior to twenty fifteen, which basically was there's no parking on town streets once Frederick County initiates the snow emergency plan. And in our code, I can pull it up. You had, there's a certain timeframe that you have. So it's not the minute that it goes into effect. If it's during the night or after six o'clock, you have until I believe the next morning, which if anybody's interested, I can look it up real quick. If not, that's our request is to go back to the way things were prior to twenty fifteen. Basically says, so emergency plan, get your car off the road.
Do we have any questions for staff related to this item?
Not really a question, but I I have a couple of comments. I agree with this one hundred percent from the emergency services expert accident. Because the fire trucks can't get through. But no, uh, and the less obstacles the crew has to to work around, the quicker we can get streets open. The one thing I'd like to try to do is see if we can find some alternatives for those citizens on places to park. And I got a couple of ideas. Um, you know, for the Silo Hill people, if we could go talk to Jubilee and see if we could have a small corner of their lot where those people could put their cars. Uh, if we could talk to the antique mall to see if we could have a small area of that uh, where people on Main Street and and what have you could put their cars. Of course, we have the pool parking lot and we have the we we probably have this parking lot I'm wrong, out back uh, that we could open up for for people to put their cars there. But I think they they just got to understand this isn't about convenience for the for our crews. It's uh, it'll, it'll get your developments opened much quicker and it'll have access for your emergency services personnel.
And it's much safer for everybody.
Yes.
Um, I did find it out. So if the emergency plan goes into effect after six P M, no vehicles will be towed away and or issued a citation until after eight A M. So you do have that window if that goes into effect after six. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
One more comment. Mr. Davis, if you want to help facilitate those conversations with some of these private entity entities, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. We'll give it a shot.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to thank Commissioner Davis. I'm all about compromise. I think that's that's a good um, some good thoughts, you know? Not just for Silo Hill, but for individuals as well. I know it gets a little dicey sometimes trying to find a parking spot where you can't park during a snow emergency. When it's in effect.
Well, I'm glad you spoke because I just thought about your street. You you guys are in bad shape back there too. Uh, the Catholic Church parking lot, uh, one place for for North Seaton people. So let me do some riding around tomorrow and see if we can can find areas for for each part of town to to help uh, help the people with this issue. Now, I do have a question while the attorney's sitting here, I guess. If we did have an agreement that the say the the antique mall would say, yeah, you can have the upper corner to park, you know, thirty cars. Once those cars were moved, would we be able to go in with our plow real quick and knock that snow away and and take care of that small part of the parking lot?
I don't see why not.
You're my man. Great. If if we have that to offer, offer every business, it might be a little bit of a
If we had a memorandum of understanding, it's like a, uh, we'll define what our actions will be and if they're amenable, it works.
Certainly would want to reduce that's right, and of course. And I'll go double check just to see if there's any reason why that wouldn't be feasible, but I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Okay. Just thinking of the Lutheran Church parking lot for the Main Street people. So, yeah, there's places out there that we just kind of try to to work with those people.
So a question for staff, is it an issue if we were to prioritize, for example, the alternate parking sites and then go after the streets regarding response times? I mean, is there a better way that we do that? Like, is there a model we could look at, for example, like? If we could find maybe another community who might do something similar to accommodate the streets to get the cars off the streets? Um, I know sometimes people just go ahead and park in the the uh, some of the private lots, but for the public lots, um, you know, I I think people might be willing to walk as far as tennis courts from Main Street, but I don't know that they would be willing to walk all the way to the softball and baseball fields. If that makes sense.
You got a huge parking lot over here in Memorial Park also.
Well, Commissioner, what I'm thinking is, you know, if people are having a parking issue, they probably have more than one vehicle.
Right.
So if we give them a lot, they can take that ahead of time, park it and have somebody come pick them up and get them. But I mean, it's going to be an inconvenience. We get it. And but but there are are some alternatives that, you know, if we try to sell it to the people.
No, I'm all for this. I'm just trying to think, can the town make a priority out of like our lots?
I I can assure you, the Director of Public Works has a very effective
Sure.
way of snow plowing and or a very efficient way of snow plowing. And he knows better than I do of where where he should start and where he should finish. Obviously, there's certain areas that have to be plowed right away, emergency services buildings. This is a county lot. But we we take care of this lot here as well. So um, I have all the faith in him that he's going to prioritize correctly.
Yeah, I think the one thing that people forget is, you know, they say, well, the downtown gets taken care of first. Well, you got to get the downtown cleared out so people have someplace to go. So that's why the development's kind of it's kind of come in second, you know, when that because you got to get the main stuff open so they have someplace to get out and then to.
We still utilize contractors as well too.
Yeah, so we utilize contractors. Um, I'd have to refresh my memory, but in our developments in particular. And we use contractors for, I think, this lot back here as well. So we've kind of patterned it the same way the county does. They start with their interiors and work your way out. If your poor soul that lives up in Sabilisville or something like that, you are plowed last. It's just the way it happens. But we haven't had good snow in a long time. So maybe this is a moot point.
Oh my, why did you say that?
Okay, so we're looking therefore for a motion to amend Title ten. Is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowen-Palat. I'm sorry.
Um, I don't have any questions. I know that um, I did hear previously that Silo Hill struggles because they have very short driveways that may only fit one car. We don't have, they don't have the longer driveways. Is there a way, if this goes through to once those areas are identified for alternate parking, to highlight those on a map and somehow let residents know and?
Yeah, I mean, we can absolutely um, put it up on our website and Facebook, but it can also be put in. Um, again, we have an email newsletter and then your Water Bill newsletter, um, they can certainly be put in there to get the get the word out because it will be a change.
Yeah.
Silo Hill is probably one of the most difficult areas.
Yeah. Um, and then the other, what was the other one? Oh, let's assume we have, I'm afraid to release it to the universe, a big snow where this goes into effect. It, like you said, it will be a big change. In the event, I I can foresee maybe some residents having trouble finding parking or say that they 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 went and couldn't find something. So is there any kind of, I don't want to say grace period, but kind of?
We go above and beyond to make sure that we get the vehicles moved. Just when we had, say, the the paving project out in Silo Hill, we did adequate warning. Um, we did have some vehicles that didn't move. They went door to door. Um, I have a very good relationship with somebody at the Mount now who has said, if you need areas clear, then you know this is where Mount students are living. Please let us know. We will, they have their own alert system that they can get out also. So um, yeah, the last thing we want to do is ticket anybody. We just want to keep the roads, everybody safe.
Yeah. That's all.
Any other comments from the board? Jump the gun, sorry. Okay, so um, we're looking therefore on page fifty four sixty six. Ordinance series twenty fifteen ordinance number fifteen dash zero six and ordinance to amend Title ten of the Code of Emmitsburg entitled Vehicle and Traffic.
It's actually the ordinance on page fifty, one on fifty four is the old one. That was just for an example.
Okay. Old dog learning new tricks. It's time, I think. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so ordinance series number twenty twenty three ordinance number twenty five twenty three dash one one and ordinance to amend Title ten of the Code of Emmitsburg entitled Vehicle and Traffic. Is there someone willing to make a motion to support this modification?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty three dash eleven as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
No, second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. It was seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Turn now to, not much. Page fifty six or sixty six for consideration. Establishment minimum bid price for tax sale of five zero nine East Main Street.
I'm going to turn this over to Clark Adams with uh, Leslie Powell's office.
That's me. Okay, so tonight, what you are considering is the minimum bid price for the um, proposed tax sale of five zero nine East Main Street. Um, this property and its owner have a rather large unpaid um, charges and fines to the town. The total amount outstanding is twenty two thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and nine cents. The vast majority of that is the result of um, property maintenance citations that were not paid and were reduced to judgment in the district court. Uh, this property has been a bit of an issue dating back to the pandemic, really. Staff has tried a variety of methods to resolve this issue without it coming to this. The further complication is that the owner of the property um, passed away. Property transferred to his estate. The estate closed without transferring the property. I know it's it's an interesting situation, but the the result is the property has been in a state of limbo for a number of years and we've come to the position that the only way to get something done is to put it up for tax sale. Under the normal tax sale procedures, the amount owed to the town would be the minimum bid price. So the auctioneer could not accept anything less than that twenty two thousand dollar number. However, because this is a vacant lot, the town has the option, is not required to, but it has the option to reduce that minimum bid price to a lower amount. In this case, reasons why the town might consider doing so would be to facilitate someone actually putting a bid in on it. Alternatively, if no one bids on this property, the town would have the opportunity to purchase it for the lowered bid price amount, whatever the town sets it at. So that is what is before you to consider. I'll give you a couple other relevant pieces of data. Uh, staff has done a calculation in terms of what the town has spent on this property in the last three years. And this is uh, enforcement, this is legal fees, this is the various times that the town has gone in, gotten abatement orders to mow and do various things. That comes out to eleven thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars. So I would strongly recommend that if we are going to lower the bid price, we would not go below that number. That's really all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions about the process or or anything else.
Have we, have there been any offers on this property?
Well, I've been in contact with a couple of interested people. Um, but there's been no offers. We we don't, we can't accept any offers.
Right.
Until you set the minimum bid price and then it goes through uh, various steps to get to that point where it will then eventually go to a tax sale.
Right. The town doesn't currently own it. We just have a lien on it. Um, so and obviously the the owner is not really available to field offers at this point.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, what what you would be doing, you're setting the bid price. It goes through the various notices that have to go out. Um, and ultimately, it's a public auction, just the auction can't accept anything less.
I just didn't know if there was any unofficial numbers thrown out there by anybody. Okay, okay. Thanks. Um, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
Can you answer my questions? I didn't know if any of any else could bid on it or not. So I imagine there can be.
At at the tax sale, they can, but not not right now. We're not in a position to do anything.
Commissioner Bowman-Palat.
Oh, um, just a clarification on the process. So it would go to eventually public auction. And let's say there are no bids or the bids don't hit the minimum. Then the town has the op, at that point, the town would have the option to purchase.
Correct. And actually, that is um, that is unique to the fact that it's vacant as well. If it wasn't vacant, the town would actually have to purchase it. Um, but because it's vacant, it is an optional thing for the town to do. So um, I suppose whether or not the town wants to put in a bid is a question for a later day, but.
Thank you.
So is the goal to expedite the process by having a reduced listing as opposed to a market value assessment of it? Like, does that represent the market value of the property with the structure and disrepair? Is that the issue?
Well, so this is just, it's actually five oh seven and five oh nine are separate lots. So there's no structure on five oh nine and we are, we're just selling five oh nine. So this is a vacant lot. Um, Kathy, I'm not sure.
That's correct. Five oh seven was purchased at tax sale
Okay.
by another pro uh, owner.
Right.
Um, five oh nine is the adjacent lot. Which has no structures on it at all.
Okay.
So.
So market value is that, is this?
Obviously, the goal is to, I mean, we've all dealt with it for three, five years, the disarray of of it. I mean, I think the end goal of everybody here is to get it sold and get it cleaned up and not be an eyesore when you first come into town. So I think by setting a price that's below the twenty two thousand, um, hopefully that would generate people interested in purchasing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have another question then. So five oh seven is the structure. That was sold at a tax sale?
Yes, the county sold that one.
How? They, the county did. When did that happen?
That happened this past May, I believe. Um, and that is working its way through the system. After someone purchases a property at tax sale, they have to wait, I think it's six months.
Okay.
And then actually initiate a foreclosure action. So the person that purchased five oh seven is working their way through that process.
Okay.
Five oh nine was treated differently because the county didn't the amount of fees that the county was owed associated with five oh nine did not rise to the level at which the county puts properties up for sale. So that's why they were sort of bifurcated and treated differently.
Okay, and five oh nine, the vacant lot lies entirely within a flood plain, correct?
I don't believe that's correct.
No.
It's not entirely in the flood plain. And I know there have been conversations with M D E that would allow development of that lot within the flood plain, just with certain restrictions. So, but the the entire lot is not in.
A structure could be put there or or parking lot, perhaps?
Perhaps. Perhaps. I believe, I believe um, we've done our due diligence that it is a marketable lot.
Okay, um, now that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I'm back uh, two years ago or so, I I did contact the the state. And uh, they they informed me that anything can be built in a flood plain. It just has to be done properly, you know, they go, that's why you have beach houses. Well, I never thought of like that. So if you put a house in there, they might say, hey, you got to put it up on stilts, but you can buy, build a house there.
Okay.
But and I was shocked by that because I didn't didn't realize that, so.
Um, if somebody were to purchase it and want to put a structure on it, is it currently zoned residential or could they go in and put a little business in?
Oh, it's village zone.
I'm sorry.
It's village zone?
Thank you.
Isn't it?
I thought it, I thought it was, I didn't bring my, darn it, I have my map. A nice color coded map. I'm stalling here. He's pulling it up. I think it's it's the same.
Or is it B?
Well, is B two, what is um, it's the same thing as Dollar General, um. I thought that extended down the whole way.
So it is pink. So it is general commercial B two.
As a kid, it was always a garden. The people that lived in the house turned that all into a garden. It was the probably the biggest garden in Emmitsburg.
Yes, so it's general commercial.
G C. So. Okay.
B two.
So that offers a lot of possibilities for development.
Yes.
But that could be, that could be a residence, that could be a business.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me add one more procedural, but if you do choose to lower the bid price, the full amount would still be owed by the property owner. You would have to file a lawsuit if you wanted to collect that difference and given the um, circumstances of the ownership collection would probably be difficult, but.
I say we cut our loss.
So with that. Wouldn't go for the difference, fight for it?
Eleven thousand or lower or?
Oh, I'm good with the the eleven.
With eleven thousand, okay, right.
But if it's sold for that, then the remainder would have to be obtained in legal.
And that would come back to the board then to make that decision if they wanted to pursue legal action for the remaining eleven thousand ish.
Right. Otherwise, who's responsible for it?
It would be just a loss on the town.
Okay.
Tell you, that's the first piece of ground you see as you come into the town limits and to get that cleaned up and get that, you know, something there. It could be a garden again, but it's it's just going to help the town in in general.
I agree.
So the funds the town would receive would be applied to the general fund or how does that? How does that work?
It would be general fund revenue.
General fund revenue, okay. All right.
I believe, but I would have to confirm with Mr. Tabler.
Okay, so the question, I'll put it to the board in sort of a straw poll manner. How many of us are interested in seeing it as eleven thousand dollars, just as that minimal offering? Or anybody want to see it twenty two or thirty three? I'm using those numbers based on what was presented to us as sort of benchmarks to recover town expenses and maybe to unfetter the the property owner of the obligation to meet the meet the expense they owe the town.
Well, it's telling me that the property is not worth very much if it doesn't have enough taxes, back taxes from the county for them to to make a motion to to go after that. Is that a fair assessment?
Sure, that that seems logical, yes. But do we know acreage size, like the total per square footage? I'm sorry to be so aware of the question.
That's a good question.
Was that in the judgment? Can I?
Looks like it is twenty six thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. I I'm typing away over here.
How much?
I'm hearing point six acres.
Sold. Okay. So we have a half acre of land on Main Street in a premium location. Waterfront location, yeah, you know? Yeah, you know? I'm trying to be optimistic here as always, Pollyanna as I am.
Adjacent shopping.
Adjacent and near schools and shopping and downtown, historic downtown. Personally, I lean higher, twenty two or better. That's my thought based on the size of the parcel. And I want to understand something, and I don't want to make a false conclusion here. Should we go twenty two thousand? And we gain that in the auction when it sells, when it does sell? Does that unencumber the property owner of their tax burden in part or in whole for what they owe in back taxes?
So if you keep the minimum bid price and someone pays that at auction and goes through the foreclosure process, that would relieve the current owner of their obligation and the property would then, of course, belong to someone else, so.
Any sum therefore would unencumber the property owner?
If it's if if it is less than the full amount that is owed.
Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering.
Okay, so so if you set it lower, let's let's use the eleven thousand number. If you say, okay, minimum bid eleven thousand plus all the costs of sale that you're entitled to under the statute, which I would recommend, of course. And it sells for that, and someone acquires the property for that amount. There's about an eleven thousand difference between what the property owner owes and what was paid. That would not be wiped away, but in order to get it, we would have to sue them in a separate civil action, and there would be no secured security on any property. It would just be a straight civil judgment that we would need to get.
And that would be a decision the board would make in the future time whether to do.
You would have to instruct us to sue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I would sooner keep it lower as a minimal bid. So we have we can get rid of it and get it, you know, that's not saying that's what we're not going to get for it, you know, we could get thirty thousand for it. All this is doing is setting the minimal bid. So if there's a lot of interest, the price will go up. If there's nobody, we're going to be back here. If there's no one that wants wants over twenty two thousand, we're going to be back here in a couple of months, rehashing this thing, and I'd sooner start it low and and go that way.
I agree because if anybody else wants it, they'll bid higher.
That's true. Commissioner Davis is correct. This is just the floor. It's a live auction after the floor and it'll potentially.
What type of action activity did the structure property, the other parcel? See, do you have any idea if there's any? How lively was the auction, I guess, or how competitive was it?
I I do not know.
Fair enough.
From conversations, I don't believe there was a lot of movement, but I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Since it was done at the county level.
And are advertising would be newspapers and?
Yeah, so it'd be the exact same. We would essentially have to step into the county's shoes or alternatively, and we'll have to see. I mean, at this point, the county's tax sale is in May, so by the time we went through the process of putting out all the notices and advertisements ourselves, it might make sense. We have the option to just submit it to the county and say, here are our fees, do this for us. We're getting to the point where it might just make sense to do that, given the time that's passed as we've kind of been mulling this over, but yeah, it would be paper. All the requirements of the state code would have to be met.
Okay, sure. Okay, so consensus again, just straw poll, eleven thousand twenty two, thirty three, or another number?
If I say eleven.
Eleven, Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Eleven, okay, Mr. Ritz.
Yeah. Yeah, was it eleven two two two?
Yeah, it would be eleven two 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 and then with all additional costs and fees.
Okay, Commissioner Bowman-Palat, thoughts on the straw poll?
So if it doesn't sell, we have, the town could buy it, but at that minimum.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just.
All right, sure enough. All right, so therefore minimum eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars plus costs of sale and all other fees to which the town would be entitled under state law. That's how I would phrase it.
I'm sorry, all other fees related to state law?
All of the all of their fees which the town would be entitled to under state law.
So.
I can do it.
You ready? All right. Is there a motion to?
I wrote it down. I'm ready.
Go.
I make a motion.
Better still.
To set, to establish the minimum bid price for the tax sale of five oh nine East Main Street at eleven thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars plus the cost of sale plus all other fees which the town is entitled to under state law.
Mr. Ritz, thank you, sir. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, you okay if we continue? Okay. Okay. Okay, we turn to page fifty seven of sixty six, Agenda Item Number Seven, Approval of Rules and Procedures for Community Legacy Grant Program for the Sustainable Communities Work Group for consideration. Staff, we turn to you.
Hi, so it's revised SOP governing the administrator administration of the Community Legacy Grant. To some of the changes we made were, we changed the title to avoid any confusion or to clarify the purpose of the program. So it was just Community Legacy Grant standard operating procedures before, but we added Emmett'sburg Facade Restoration Program to make it more specific. And then this revised SOP also addresses a potential barrier for applicants in case they cannot obtain two estimates. So if they can, they'll have to report that they reached out to at least two contractors. Another change was that the applicant, application will require applicants to show that their project aligns with the grant grant objectives. Also, the revised SOP established some other requirements for the Sustainable Communities Work Group, including allowing anyone to serve as a member. They would be subject to a board approval. Their term would be limited to five years. And we also added a section to clarify the role of the S C W G, which is to solely provide recommendations which get forwarded to the Maryland Historical Trust to ensure that the chosen applications meet the eligibility criteria criteria. And the funding is only awarded once the application is reviewed and approved by the M H T. And then we added another section to ensure transparency, so the address, name, and description of projects and the amount of funds awarded will be posted on the website on the page designated for the Community Legacy Program. I believe those are all the changes we made, but I can go over some of the comments provided by the commissioners and kind of respond to those. For example, sorry, can't seem to find the piece of paper that I need.
Quick question, are you looking for the questions about Community Legacy Program, the stapled item? Different one, okay. I do have that. Is that what you're looking for or no? Okay.
So the email's only on the desk, correct? Not electronically? I don't remember seeing any. So we already got that one electronically?
Later today. Basically, it states that the way that we we reviewed the role of M H T in D H C D was correct. They they don't approve projects. They don't vet projects. The town's responsibility is to refer projects to them, which are recommended by the committee. That was basically it, and then she addressed a few other things. Trying to move here, so. And then I believe Commissioner Bowman-Palat sent an email yesterday evening, just asking a few questions. First question was the purpose of this 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 SOP, is it to take place of Resolution twenty two dash O one R or completely separate and completely new? The resolutions that we do that the board approves is only to authorize the mayor and town staff to apply for grant funding. That resolution has to be done for any D H C D grant. Basically, is the town's commitment to apply for this grant and authorizing the mayor to sign. The SOP is a is a standalone document, doesn't have anything to do with the resolution. We've never had a standard operating procedure for the Community Legacy Facade Grant. This is new, based off of questions and concerns from the board previously. And would the SOP be for next year's round of applicants or starting immediately? That would be up to the board to decide what an effective date for the operating procedures. And I don't know the answer to number two, how many projects were reimbursed from this past round, and are there some who still need to submit receipts?
Um, sorry, go ahead.
That's the current one, right?
I can put my file, but I believe there's two projects that are outstanding that are finishing up their projects, fiscal year twenty two, but all the others are completed and pretty much closed out.
Thank you. That was Ms. Shaw.
My question for asking those was I was trying to figure out if there was a reason for the timeline of the SOP. What is it going to delay people who are waiting for their money or previous or future applicants?
No, the board can decide when they want it effective, if they want it effective with the new round, which we have not received word if we were awarded money yet or not for fiscal year twenty four. Fiscal fiscal year twenty fours round, if you want to make it effective for this round, because we have not started accepting applications yet. Or if you want to wait till next year's, that the board can decide that.
And when would we normally start accepting applicants or applications next?
Once we receive the award or war notification from D H C D, which typically happens to over in October, about October. The goal is to try to get all applications in by the end of the year, and then the committee reviews in January, February. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was clarifying information.
Do we have other questions for staff related to this item so far? Mr. Ritz?
A few things. Looks like this is a carryover from last month, but the Sustainable Communities Work Group would now, it says must, so I look at that as a shall.
Which page? I'm sorry.
Page fifty nine of the packet. So page, page fifty nine of the agenda packet, specifically page two of the SOP regarding the this SOP.
Right, so it's it's a shall be subject to board approval.
No, no, number one, though.
A number where it must consist.
Of five members. Currently, it's three.
Right.
So.
It used to be five.
Okay, so, okay, and now it's three, but now it's going to go back to five, and now let now we're going to number two. I I noticed a strike through from from last month where the mayor has no the mayor is not appointing as the mayor would normally do for for, let's say, the Planning Commission or Citizens Advisory Committee. This is just anyone that's interested now would would apply, fill out an application or say, hey, I'm interested, just like a phone call, email, that would suffice, and then it comes to a meeting and we do it like consent agenda item.
That would be my recommendation, is to do it the same way. I mean, we can leave in there shall be appointed or shall be recommended by the mayor with board approval. Since the mayor's, it's the mayor's agenda, all this agenda. Since the mayor's it's the mayor's agenda, all this agenda packet, this is the mayor's agenda. This is everything that the mayor is interested in presenting. These are all the mayor's wants and wishes. So when it comes on the agenda, typically it's something that the mayor's already said yes, no. But this way, then, say, we open up an application and the deadline to be a on this committee is just, say, October first. And we get all the applications in. I know the idea is complete transparency. So then it comes, here's the five applicants. The board decides, okay, out of those five, we're going to go with one and two or three and four. I mean, I we're just trying to follow the board's wishes here to make it as completely transparent as possible.
I appreciate that because as we all know, I'm the one that started this process. You know, I don't, I, you know, I'm fine taking the mayor out if the mayor wants to appoint. That's fine. I'd like the fact that the board would approve said committee like they do other committees in town. Now, that was my whole argument. So.
The language could say the same as we do in the code when it comes to the mayor points, the board approves. That's the way they are with the Parks Committee and Citizens Advisory Committee. So to keep it consistent, then, members of this, the Sustainable Communities Work Group may apply and then be appointed to by the mayor upon board of commissioner approval.
Okay, so I'm not going to push for it either way. I'll let that up to my colleagues here because I won't won't have a part of that. But I'm just just throwing that out there. So I just wanted to say thank you, though, at least that this part was that the board now has a has a process in this in this, especially because it all goes back to the beginning where we approved the grant anyway. You know, we set the dollar amount and approve what we're asking of the state. I guess my next question I did not ask last week, and if it's in here, I do apologize, but I couldn't find it. And I know I touched on the different. You know, we focus on facades and the restoration. Where in Maryland, this this group, the DHCD, where do they stipulate mandate that it it be? I'm not talking about the different areas now. I'm talking now I'm looking at area of of town. Why do we only focus on a certain area of town? Why are we excluding other areas within the town limits?
And these two can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the the requirements of DHCD is that it must be within the Sustainable Communities area. And that plan is is submitted every five years, five years. And so the property has to lie within that area because the goal of this program is to enhance the appearance of your town, your downtown, et cetera. But that's why they they do every town. I don't know if if you ever attached it, but the city of Laurel has a fantastic Community Legacy webpage that explains it very well. But that's a requirement of DHCD of where these properties are located.
So somewhere over the past nine years, I probably have approved a map designating a certain area of Emmitsburg as a sustainable. What's the word again?
Sustainable communities area.
But if we were to change that in the future.
There's certain guidelines and requirements to be in that area. I don't know them off the top of my head. We would have to go back and revisit. I don't even know when the plan needs to be re re. Yeah, we'd have to look at see when it's supposed to be done. So any changes to that map have to be done when the plan is renewed. And like I said, it happens every five years. I don't know when it's due again, but there are certain requirements to be in the Sustainable Communities area.
If it's a requirement, it's a requirement.
Right.
You did mention guidelines first, though. If he was just.
No, it's a requirement.
Okay, if it was just guidelines.
No.
So reminds me of now Jack Sparrow.
Exactly. But no, it's absolutely a requirement of DHCD that it lies within that area.
When this was presented at MML, this group was invited to come to town to present to town. And at the same time, the emphasis was in the comprehensive plan, putting energy and investment into Main Street, which at the time was not where it could be. And the emphasis of this was to improve the facades, to improve the aesthetics of Main Street. And also, there was a hope for something of a ripple effect where if one person saw the household down the line, oh, look, they've done this. Maybe I should, you know, take care of the shutters or something, just to create a little bit of momentum. And maybe a little competition. But it was part of the the emphasis was on reinvesting in Main Street. And the premise was, you know, if the town's not doing it, you know, making these grant opportunities available, then, you know, the the community will not benefit from them. You know, it's like basically, you know, we'll put energy, we will put energy here to show that, you know, our downtown is vibrant and is vital and is relevant. So that's part of it.
Okay.
I have a question about that, actually. So does that mean the purpose, the original purpose of our grant was to not necessarily restore properties to a historic look, but just to provide bunnies for general maintenance of the properties?
So facades and the roofs, roofs, windows, energy. I know that basic premise was to enhance, well, sorry.
Basic premise was to enhance Main Street in that, again, you know, the some of the homes, some of the business facades weren't what they could be. And this provided a force multiplier. So, you know, one dollar would now become multiple dollars. It would allow them to spend when they would not otherwise be able to. And this also, I believe, allowed some people some leverage in order to to get some lending to improve their homes where they might not have had that opportunity before. But that's something I would have to go back and double check in my notes from way back when. So.
So.
It's been a success.
Absolutely. I just, you know, I'm thinking is that something we want to consider stipulating an improvement versus a maintenance? Is it going to? Is it just a routine maintenance of I'm going to replace the same window with the exact same window? Or will it be an upgrade and and really then enhanced like that property right next to Vigilant Host Company? Was that done with the the grant by any chance?
Yes.
Yes.
They withdrew.
Oh. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Did apply.
I misspoke. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
And that's. Really nice.
It does look nice.
But I mean.
So I think trying to, I'm trying to understand the the framework you're putting forward. The goal wasn't intended to align with like an historic district where there were stringent standards that had to be reviewed prior to any modification of the facade. In fact, there was pushback in the initial meeting saying, hey, we like this program, but that's not what we want. You know, people just wanted the ability to enhance the the front of their homes, the roof, the windows deciding. But there was a strong pushback to not make it an historic district with those limitations in a review board and the expense that that comes, you know, if you're going to replace a window with, you know, if a, you know, a six over six with another six over six, and it has to be wood, and that could get very pricey, you know, the the money that goes to the whole thing could go to like four windows.
Right, understood.
We were trying to avoid that.
And I'm not saying like adhere to historic standards because I think really the only properties are those that are labeled historic and therefore would be a totally different grant anyway. I guess the differentiation is is do we as a town make a differentiation between regular homeowner maintenance and an improvement, something that goes above and beyond what they are expected to do anyway? Because I did have residents in other areas, neighborhoods say, well, if they get their front porch painted, how come I can't get my front porch painted? I understand it comes down to the sustainable area. But where do we say like there's maintenance versus an actual improvement to the property?
I think the board first chose the village zone for the idea to invest in Main Street. That was part one. The other part was, I believe those areas were defined in the Sustainable Community areas as well. And that's where they have that advantage and that their home is two hundred plus years old potentially, whereas so, yeah, there was, there's a question of it seeming inequitable, and I understand that.
Sorry, there's a question of it seeming inequitable, but it's if you see, I'll simplify it, a rising tide lifts all boats. You know, the value of the community is enhanced by a steady and vital Main Street. And if we're pushing money into that, then it will buoy the values of other properties in the community beyond Main Street.
So, I mean, are we able to take the focus that we want you to go above and beyond routine maintenance? Is that something that can be considered because? Or no, are we just paying for? Yeah.
So so my recommendation would be not to make your scope work so narrow that you don't get anybody to apply. And then we don't utilize the funding. Those could be things your Sustainable Community Work Group should prioritize. Should prioritize the house that falls in the Sustainable Community area and their roof is collapsing or their front porch is falling down and aesthetically, it could be taking away from the beauty of the downtown or in that area. And then that that work group should prioritize those kind of projects as opposed to what you mentioned is just routine maintenance. But even to that routine maintenance, at least in my eye, can also improve the the look and the appearance. So I I just would caution making the scope too narrow that you don't get people to apply.
Oh, no, no, I'm not trying to make it too narrow. I'm just trying to show that, you know, we're making good use of our taxpayers' money and what we choose to invest in within the town. But that was something that I think came up before when they evaluate the grants. Is there like a rubric or something that makes it transparent as far as how they how they are scoring? So these things that are listed, we're going to look for the following questions, allocation of funds. Doesn't constitute a major visual or structural component and so on. So some of these are objective or subjective, but they could be made more objective. If it, I don't know, I think back as a teacher and trying to grade in, I don't know what you grade, but grading an essay is a pain because it's very subjective. But if you put it on a rubric and say, we want, you know, grammar, and this is what good grammar looks like, can we want, you know, did you fully explain blah, blah, blah? And then you give it a point value, you can make something that is subjective more objective. And do we give our applicants the opportunity to know what they're being graded on so that they can address that?
Sorry, I was just for clarification. Are you suggesting that in our application, we put a rubric for the applicants or does MHT have a rubric to?
No, I'm suggesting like when the the Sustainable Work Group meets and they're trying to decide where it goes, that they have something that's, I'm just trying to take the subjectivity out of it because I know that's what came up back in January is, you know. And some of the replies that we received from Mr. Long especially were very detailed and very well thought out. And he was completely on point. So can we put that into something that is official so that there's an official scoring guide? And it can be said, is this routine maintenance or is it an improvement? And and that could be added.
I think that might be a disbursement to people who want to do to do work on their home. The reason why I thought we reason why we went for this program is to help people with assist assist the residents with or the businesses with repairing their buildings and the structures. That's, I mean, the help, every little bit helps. And it comes from the state because they have to pay for everything first. They don't get any money. You pay for the whole complete. And then they decide how much you, you know, if you're going to get that money back.
Okay, so I just, I guess that's my clarification is, so it could be just a routine maintenance then that that we're paying for.
Yeah, they have, they're paying for it. Actually, they're just.
Right, but the grant money could just be the routine maintenance.
Yeah, I know this is a sore subject, but a new roof is routine maintenance. You know, if a roof is failing, then we're putting a roof on it.
Right.
It's not really beautifying a property, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
Right. That's, I guess that's the whole crux of the matter. Where does it come to beautification versus?
Grant setup for beautification. I don't think that's its core value.
Facade improvement?
I think it's just, just to clean up some.
He's not here right now, but Mr. Mayor did state that it was like, you know, people driving through town, through the town and seeing the town and especially along Main Street. So in my mind, that is beautifying the town, printing up the properties, making making our town look more presentable.
I making it more presentable, certainly, but, you know, taking something that hasn't been maintained and then maintaining it, giving somebody the opportunity to maintain it, it's a wonderful opportunity. If if I'm not able to, you know, put time and money into my facade and the paint is beginning to fail, then this is again a means by which they can get that. And you could, here's your subjectivity. It could be printing it up or it could be just stabilizing it. I mean, protecting the structure. I mean, the idea of the roof, if you start with a roof, you know, we know that, you know, you're going to potentially stabilize the structure from water damage and rot. So there is value there.
Yeah. But then, you know, again, I still think the whole, on my own, yeah, the whole thing is subjective, though. I mean, I see what you're saying, but then it could just be. Man, I always wanted a new porch. I'm going to take advantage of this. I mean, obviously, like Commissioners Sweeney said, you still have to pay for it upfront. You gotta pay your contractor and then you get a certain amount back. You might not get all of it, but every little bit helps.
So, I mean, I understand. I mean, painting, paint, if you look at the downtown and what what projects have been approved over by Community Legacy over the years. A lot of them are paint jobs that have transitioned that piece of property from dull to vibrant and enticing. And I'm going to go in there because, look at it, it looks great. It's got a new paint job. It's got a new roof. They've invested in their property, which means they've probably invested in their business. And that, if you looked at that over, this has been a very successful program for well over ten years. You know, we've probably invested like three quarters of a million dollars downtown. And it, it's like, it's an addiction. So I've done it. Now you want to do it. And it's like circular down the road. I guess not circular because it's not circle. But it is really taken on. And in the ten plus years, the town has made the commitment to this program. And it's been extremely successful. We had one year where things were called into question. So we're going to look at fine tuning the system. But let's not get away why we did it. I mean, look at what this has done for the downtown. I just, I don't want to discourage anybody from applying to it. We have, we have increased the Sustainable Communities map. It was very small when we first started and it's grown. Twenty twenty-two is when we did it. Five more years, we have to do it again. I think you guys have great points, but if you stop and think about the whole goal of it is to entice people to our town. And yes, a roof might be repairs, but a nice looking roof is better than the roof that's fallen apart. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
It does. Yeah, it does make sense and I.
Be just cleaning building.
Yeah.
And the bricks or, you know, not like I think the VFW cleaned and had those all pointed.
Repointed the brick, yeah.
And just touched up here and there, but I think they used it too. I mean, I don't know who all used it, but a lot of people upgraded, you know, when they seen it done. So a lot of the main square was done. Where they see the E plus, E plus is now, that was all redone by.
So for this, is there an interest in accepting the modifications as presented?
No.
No? Okay.
No, I have additional additional concerns, but if this was Mayor Briggs's vision to begin with, and considering we're on the cusp of an election and one of you gentlemen might be the next mayor, is this something we should wait for new admin to put their vision to it?
So who brought the agenda item, may I ask? I don't recall. I'm drawing a blank.
So staff staff brought the agenda item based off the concerns of the commissioners as a result of the last round of Community Legacy.
Okay.
Staff was trying to be proactive in creating the the standard operating procedure. Not trying to do anything else other than that.
So it sounds like is anyone else interested in holding off on this and tabling this? Or does anybody want to move forward with this?
She said you don't have to have anything. Your place should keep it as it is now.
She said you don't have to have anything, your place should keep it as it is now. Or do you think we should have something in place?
I I think that there are a lot of really great additions in here, and I think we're on the right track. There considering we're so close.
Would you be willing to work with staff? Like to put it in writing so that way they have your input specifically, so it meets your standard? Is that something?
I don't think it's like my standard is like.
She has, we have. Email exchanges back and forth with her ideas and and Julia and Maddie have done a lot of research on their end, working with Community Legacy.
And 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 to that point, they came back with a really good example with Laurel. And looking at theirs, it's, it's, it's pretty good. So there, maybe we do want to make use of some of their suggestions and kind of.
Yeah, absolutely. And my, I mean, I just want to make sure we don't hold up anybody that applies in this round. I don't know if there's certain areas that you want to go ahead and approve and we move forward.
But we don't need to have this passed tonight for those applications to go through, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Richards, or anything in particular that you'd want to see modified moving forward? I know you said that you're not going to be here, but.
Okay, I have, I do have one question. It's sort of nagging on me here. And because we have legal representation, I might I'll ask him a question then too. Do you have a copy of this, Mr. Clark? And I hate to put you on the spot like this, but if you can't, if you don't want to answer.
I'll just say I don't know.
Okay, well, there you go. So number eight.
What page?
Page fifty nine.
All right.
An agenda should be made for the meeting and copies should be printed for the public. Copies of applications should not, not shall, just should not be made available to the public due to personal information provided in the application. I do like the addition here, this post award after the committee meets, that the address, name, description of project and amount of funds awarded will be posted on the website on the page designated for Community Legacy Program. My question to you is if we're not having that information in an agenda packet due to personal information, what personal information are we keeping from the public? Where it's just an application, filling out the legacy grant, obtaining some quotes, are the quotes themselves should not be made available to the public?
So Miss Commissioners, can I just jump in real quick? This was put in there specifically because people were concerned with the packets were were left out last time that their public information may have been exposed. So this is why this was done. However, if you attend the meeting, if you watch the meeting, you will hear everybody's application. So they are public to an extent, but we're saying, I'm not going to hand you a copy of my application, or I'm not going to hand you a copy of somebody else's application. Those fall under the Public Information Act request, which we just had one on somebody's application. So by putting the na- the the name, property owner, the address and the award amount and the project, shouldn't that suffice?
No, because I feel that everybody, this is a state program, so whether we're involved or anyone, the money has the money comes from the residents of Maryland into the program to benefit communities that that do this. As for the meeting itself, it is not televised and it's held at eleven o'clock in the morning where a lot of people can't attend. I took off work just so I could sit in on it because you know, I used my lunch break. Because I raised concern and that upset some individuals, well, it upset all three members of the committee. So I made it a point to show up. I was the only one here. It's a terrible time, honestly, but are are we, are, yeah, I I like being transparent. However, if if it's a legal problem, then I understand that. And I, that's why I like to hear.
Well, it could be. I've never seen an application, so I don't know what type of information is actually included on an application. I could see good reason why if there's information that would otherwise be protected under the Public Information Act, why it would be advisable to not make that information public. That is not going to be a very satisfactory answer, because that's a lot of maybes and ifs, but I can.
Yeah, so Clark, we just sent one to Leslie to review. We do have an active Public Information Act request on an application. And we have sent that all to their office to review to see what can be disclosed. So I will know further once she comes back and.
Well, there you go. How how convenient, it's all at the same time. Okay.
Well, I mean, along that same line, would just the address and description of the project be made? All the ones that are in for consideration ahead of time without the whole application? Three twenty eight Mountaineers Way. New paint. Versus the entire.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. I've not, I never saw an application of somebody, I don't know who, they left, I they were in this room and it was picked up because it was right before a town meeting, so they they, I don't think they were. I don't think the intent was to leave them out, but they were left out.
Because this says right now that it would be made.
The bolded items to me look like after the committee meets, yeah.
But if.
Which is fine, because that does go on the website and that's good, that's good to know. Then you have a nice list and it's
So, so if you were to, I guess what I'm asking is, doesn't say after the meeting. Are you asking if that information for everybody who is putting in the application can be made available ahead of time?
Well, only only because it's it's a public meeting that that the committee meets to select who they're going to award.
Correct.
And the money that they're going to give. To me, that is part of the agenda packet for that committee.
Sure.
And that agenda packet should be made public.
I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
I I'm with you, because I would think an address and a description of the project shouldn't.
Number eight does not say after the meet. I mean, it doesn't say, once the funds are awarded. It says, address, name, description of the project and the amount of funds awarded will be posted on the website on the page designated for Community Legacy Program.
The amount of funds awarded, what does that mean?
So they can, they can probably tell better than I can. You want, Maddie? It's basically, so I submit a project, my project is for a new roof, my project's twenty eight thousand dollars. That's what I've requested. The Sustainable Work Group has come back and said, you know what, we're only going to give you ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that's the amount that was awarded.
So post-meeting, after the that committee meets, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's when all the application, go ahead, Maddie, you know better than I do.
So the copies that were found in this room were meant for this community, the Sustainable Committee Communities Work Group that showed all the like photos and all the quotes and whatnot. That's that's their agenda packet for their meeting.
Yes, they're provided that a week before the meeting.
And we're provided an agenda packet. The Board of Commissioners, it's posted on the website. Unless it's, you know, like a closed session, I don't think anything's really missing from that PDF on the website, correct? Like, what what I have here in my hands, somebody can go to our website tonight and they have it.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So but if if because part of that agenda packet are actual quotes obtained from homeowners or business owners to fix up their property utilizing this legacy grant program, if that's a a a problem which your office is looking at, that that's what I'd like to know, but I don't have an answer for that now. That that's all I'm saying, Michelle. It's like, it's part of the whole thing, the whole process.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so I come back to the board. Straw pole again. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, do you want to add a comment?
No, I'm just wondering if, since we have something that Ms. Powell has in reviewing, should we wait to get that to, so we don't have to come back next month and change something? Would next month screw us up real bad?
No.
I mean, just to 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 make sure, that that would probably answer some of these questions.
Okay.
And concerns.
So that's a yes for tabling it? Yes, okay. Mr. Sweeney? Mr. Ritz?
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes, although I don't know if you want me to note the areas that I'm concerned of the way it stands now. Or.
I would rather hear them now, so we're not having to table it again.
Right, it's the same thing that I put already, like, for example. Participants will receive a fifty percent match. Looking at Laurel, they do up to a fifty percent match. Is that always a fifty percent match or is there a leeway? Could be less than fifty, because I wasn't sure the way it read. You don't have to answer that now. These are just things I was looking for for clarification. Also, the last section where the town is asking that the applicant can, needs to reimburse the town if something has changed within a five-year period, I question that.
No, that can be removed based off of Ms. Jackson's email, as you saw what she said. They don't have any maintenance requirements, however, they strongly encourage, you know, it to be used correctly and not changed within a year or two. So I would say that we put in there that it's strongly encouraged that you maintain these improvements for three years. And that's just straight from DHCD.
Yeah, like I was thinking, for example, somebody sold their property like a year after the improvements and then what if the next homeowner made a change and they would be obligated for to reimburse? I'm just trying to think it through. But I do agree, it should be strongly suggested that we keep them, because that's what we want them to do is to. Oh, it did. She had to pay the money back for what? So where does that money go? Does any other city?
I have to, I have to look, because I don't know that that's necessarily the the case. I know she was required to pay some of it back, but it might have been because she didn't finish the improvements. I'll have to go back and research that one, because I don't, I can't speak to it off the top of my head.
I mean, that's something I would like legal advice on too, as far as can we take back state money once it's awarded? I wouldn't think that we.
I I, like I said, I don't want to speak on it, because I don't know.
No, I'm not saying, I just said I would like legal advice on that one. So that we don't get ourselves into a pickle of that. But Laurel has some great ideas that I think should be considered too, like, like they said, it's, there's flexibility, not, you know, up to a fifty percent match. And then they have, but at least this much, so that gives it more flexibility. And they have a really nice way of listing out what examples of eligible improvements and ineligible, I can say that, expenses just to provide clarity for what the, what the town might be looking for. I think that might actually make it easier for an applicant to want to apply if they they have specific examples. But I also really like ideas from Laurel, and I thank you for passing this along where it says each eligible improvement must be fifty percent or more visible from the right away. Has to be, well, I think we probably have this in there already, completed by licensed and insured professional.
So that we do have on advice from attorney that we we have to encourage people to make sure their contractor is licensed to do work in the state of Maryland. We can't make it a requirement, but we want to make people aware that it is your responsibility to make sure your contractor is licensed. There are certain things in Laurel's website I really do like, but we have to say, remember Laurel is a extremely large city. So they can set probably different parameters that we cannot. Just because I'm going to have, they probably have an overwhelming number of applicants and homes within their sustainable communities.
Okay, so but you, but this was sent to me from the town as an exemplar.
Yes, yes, and 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 I think it's got a great, great vibe on it.
Yeah.
But there's certain things, obviously, that I think that wouldn't apply to the town, but there are certain things that I think they did very well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, I think it is really well done. I'm, I thank you for passing that along. And they also have under ineligible properties, which we've already talked about, like, it has to be within a sustainable area, which is, that's a requirement from the state. And it also has properties in which city staff and elected officials of the city have a financial interest of at least twenty five percent would be ineligible. So is that something we would want to consider or no? So those are the only recommendations and not recommendations, thoughts that I had that I would have put in writing to to consider.
That's a, that's a tough question there about the elected official. Well, I know, I got my roof on before I got on the board, so just in case anybody's wondering. But, you know, three of us sitting right here are in that zone, well, four with the mayor. The four, six of us are in that zone. But we still have property, not the.
I think the intent of the program was neither to exclude anybody, whether you're an elected official or not. They don't have any guidelines that I have found on their website that says an elected official cannot participate in this program.
No, that would be town imposed, from what I understand. And it's not that they can't apply, is that Laurel said with a financial interest of at least twenty five percent, so that they kind of try to put stipulations. And I'm not saying we go that direction, I just.
No, it's it's a very good question, though, because that's kind of what started this whole thing. And and that's not a bad question, because I told you the ethics thing.
Well, no, and that's, that was, that's pretty much what upset everybody. And I was, I I, my whole thing was about perception. And I, perception can be looked at, there's two sides to it. I mean, everyone's, most people's perception that I heard from my, their perception of me was I was picking on somebody and stating that they are not allowed to do so because they aren't elected official. I'm not yelling at you, I'm just saying, but but that's not, that's not true. I agree. It was just the fact that there was no approval process and there's really, there was really nothing in place. Now, all of a sudden, you know, we've been kicking it around for a while. We have a SOP that's coming, getting coming into play, which I think is awesome, that that should happen. I like the fact that the board has a little bit more responsibility now. That's great. To me, that alleviates those potential. You know, i- i- it's all about transparency. I'm not accusing, I was never accusing anybody of doing anything. I just, it just, it could look that way. And I know a lot of people got bent out of shape. And I received a, some really long emails explaining that, but so all that said, I do agree with you that, you know, I don't, I don't feel that an elected official should be excluded. I think there just needs to be a some sort of disconnect, you know, so there's no perceived conflict of interest, that's all.
Staff, question?
No, that's a good rate.
This is, it's dialogue, it's important. Do you feel you have a direction in preparing revision for the October meeting?
We'll give it another shot.
Okay.
Also, did, did I miss it? A copy of the application itself?
It's on the website. We didn't, we didn't send one out, but it is on the website.
I want to look at that too, just to make sure it's.
The application, the actual property applicant or the application we send to the DHCD?
No, the applicant.
Yeah, that's on the website. I'm sure, Julia can send everybody a copy tomorrow.
You must know my navigation skills aren't the greatest, thank you. You're right, I can't argue with you.
Is there a motion to table agenda item number seven?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Bowman?
A second, that.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowman-Palad, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowman Pollard. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi. Motion carries five to zero. We now turn to page sixty-two of sixty-six, agenda item eight. Approval of bid for downtown streetlight purchase for consideration. This item we began some time ago, but. It was. Presented. Most recently in our last meeting and we are returning to it again. Staff, we turn to you. I know you've been presented all sorts of questions. And. We hope to hear back now.
Good evening. This is the final agenda item of the night, number eight. Starting on page sixty-two. So I'll just briefly go over the RFP. The request for proposal again, for those who this is their first time hearing the agenda item. So this is for the purchase of streetlights on our main street and on South Eden Avenue. The bid was published on June fifteenth with the due date of July twenty-first. The bids were open on August third. With four town staff and then they were initially reviewed by the Board of Commissioners at the August twenty-first town meeting. And they were, the award of a winning bidder was tabled until tonight. The bids, a requirement in the bid packet was that they had to be good for 60 days for the finalists. That were presented to the board at the last meeting. Three of them had a 60 day mark. One of them had 30 days, but they did grant an extension. So just FYI, the three that are good for 60 days will expire on September nineteenth. The proposed project would replace a hundred and three total streetlights on Main Street and South Eden Avenue. And mostly it's being pursued because the lights are old. They were installed in the late eighties. And some of them are rusting and have chipping paint and fogging globes. The bid was advertised and all the required methods per the town code and the total project funding we have. We have five different grants that we piecemeal together for this project. So the total cost that we're anticipating with the streetlight purchase and installation is just is two hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Thirty thousand of that is designated for installation by a contractor. And so in total, we received nine bids. Three were thrown or not pursued by town staff because we felt the bids were too high. Compared to the other bidders. Two did not include all the components, which left us with four finalists, which are in the PowerPoint. Next. Catoctin lighting, Daybreak LED LLC, Rexel USA and Shepherd Electric Supply. Next slide, please. This was a brief comparison that was presented to the board last week, or excuse me, last month. Kind of showing the first beneath the company, the first line is where the companies are located. Two are in Maryland and two are in Texas. The next line is the total cost to purchase the a hundred and three streetlights. And then the next one was how good the bids are, how long the bids are good for. As mentioned, three of them were 60 days and then Shepherd Electric was only 30, but they granted an extension. And then the total price we're anticipating for the project. Next slide, please. After the town meeting last month, there were some additional questions from the board regarding. More information for the streetlights. And so town staff did reach out to the four finalists. And asked about the shipping cost replacement because that was our public works director, Mr. Click was at the last meeting. And said that was a concern of his that he wanted to be able to, if a light was hit by a vehicle or there was damage to it, to be able to quickly replace it. And so the top line is the shipping costs for replacement and that would be at the very minimum, just one unit being shipped. The next line was the turnaround replacement time, which you can see most of them are about the same. Daybreak, Daybreak is a little bit quicker. And then we asked them to confirm that they had dimmer switches and then about the photo control. That was mostly a Mr. Quick question. And then I, not on the PowerPoint, but I also reached out because we had some more questions after this. From the board was about the lumen output for the bulbs and so. Okay, which was emailed to the board. And so pretty much what we found for the women outputs was that. There pretty much it depends what the town is looking for. They vary, for instance, Catoctin lighting was between forty-five and ninety watts. Daybreak and the other one, Daybreak was between four thousand and eight thousand, based on how many watts we want. The light to have and then Rexel and Shepherd, they're off, their bid was for the exact same streetlight. And so like for the Dorchester, it ranged between four thousand, one hundred seventy-six lumens and seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight. And the Washington was similar, but brighter for the higher range of fourteen thousand. And then the bulb color, again, the, a lot of the manufacturers told us there was a wide variety of what the town was, is able to select for Catoctin lighting. They said that they recommended a four thousand to four thousand, five hundred kilowatt. And that they suggest a natural white light. But there's five color options that we can choose from. And then Daybreak said that there's yellow, soft white and bright white that we can select from. And Rexel and Shepherd said that based on the luminaires that we choose, there's a white color, more ones that are more yellow. And then finally, for other notes. For. Catoctin lighting, they said that they could put up a sample if you liked. Daybreak said that they. The settings can be easily adjusted with a switch. So the women output and the light color. And then Rexel and Shepherd said the polls quoted have the ability to add a decorative banner arm. Which didn't really have to do much with the questions, but it was something they felt they wanted to suggest. I think that was it. Did the board have any questions? Or well, I should say the, so town staff is looking for a motion to approve a winning better tonight and. Depending on which one, so like if Rexel or Shepherd Electric is chosen, we would need a decision on if the Dorchester or Washington streetlight is. This would be like to be pursued. And I do have later in the PowerPoint pictures of those items that the board would like to see them again.
So the thirty thousand installation cost is not in these bids, correct?
Correct.
And we, did we budget for that? That's in our budget for the.
Yeah, the total project cost of the two fifty-seven, eight seventy-six includes installation. So what's set aside for purchases? The two hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-six.
The, did you mention in the email that the thirty thousand for installation is is already part of the grant? That's, it would be covered by the grant? I thought I saw that.
Yeah, I put that in my email. The thirty thousand is, if you see up there, so our total grant award is two fifty-seven, eight seventy-six. And in that grant, there's a specific allocation. So allocated two twenty-seven, eight seventy-six for the purchase. And then thirty thousand is for the installation. So it's covered in the grant. So the town does not have to come up with an additional thirty thousand dollars.
If. We put out the bid for installation and it comes. Above thirty thousand, then we would have to make up that difference then, I would assume.
Yes.
Okay. And. Just to clarify, so we're looking just to replace the ones in that on the map that was highlighted and not. For everything in the future or just that area for now?
Correct. Just Main Street and South Eden. There was talks about putting a replacement plan together for the rest of the town. Because some areas needed a little bit more than some others for the neighborhoods, but this would just be Main Street and South Eden.
Okay.
It's like a phased approach.
Is it correct if we went with Catoctin? Some of the existing lights that we have, we could keep some of those for parts and they, that's parts are interchangeable?
That's my understanding from the Director of Public Works. And one thing on the slide. Catoctin lighting is in, is. No, that's not the one I'm thinking of. Which one has a project manager in Frederick?
Rexel.
Rexel.
Rexel, yeah.
I'm looking at, on page sixty-four, it says Rexel.
That's correct.
When you look at this over a forty year period. With with just shipping, because we probably go through. It's hard to believe. Five to eight. Streetlights. A year. And you do that over forty years, which is what these last set of lights lasted us. We would save. That extra cost just in shipping. And I guess that's still the. Staff's recommendation to go with Catoctin?
Yes.
So where right now it might not look like we're going to save, you know, we're spending more money in the long run over the period of the project. We could be saving money in shipping and being able to run to Thurmont and pick up parts and. Things like that.
I know that the intent is to try to keep the current historic look. On the main street and and we do have a couple other bids that are very similar, I think. To this one. However, if we looking. Ahead to the future to, let's say, new developments go in. That wouldn't be some, would the town be able to stipulate? For the developer, we want you to put these types of lights in, or is that something that? Wouldn't necessarily, like, could we say we want the same lights or not? And the only reason why I'm asking is because I did have some residents reach out. Concerned with future developments that this. Light wouldn't follow them into future developments. I didn't even know if that would be allowed anyway, because I don't know if that's up to the developer. But a concern for the, the dark skies light in in the sense that, you know, you don't want the light escaping up. It doesn't attract from the light that's on the ground. But it's something to consider for future developments, maybe not necessarily for Main Street at this time, but. Especially back in that Freely Farm area where it's so dark and we, we do have a great view of the night skies. We had. Professional photographers coming out to the park to to photograph the comet when it was here a few years ago.
So to address your question, I'll have to look into it. I'll talk to Clark and Nidjia about it. But even if it's something that I, I don't know if we can, when you require it or not, but it, even if we can't require it, it's something that we can strongly encourage. And when it comes to an annexation, there are things that you can ask of that developer and put requirements on them. So, excuse me, so if it is a residential property that would be developed outside of town and it's an annexation, there are certain things that you can say, okay, you can do this, but we're going to require you to do X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
Mr. Ritz?
I could be wrong, but the, the recent. Floating flex zone that we approved. I think that could fall under that potentially where the board would have said, I could be wrong, but.
That was my impression too.
If it falls under that, because we approved that. If an applicant chooses to, to. Another proper word, utilize or request that zoning designation for for that development. Of course, it's, it's limited.
It's commercial only.
Currently.
But you could.
Currently.
So that's part of the, the, the benefit of that floating zone is the board then has more leeway on what they can request. So it could be part of that floating zone requirement for a property that meets that. That makes sense?
Yeah, no.
Any other questions for staff related to? The presentation so far? Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Davis? No? Okay. All right. Um, staff has recommended the Catoctin Lighting Services bid. Mr. Davis reiterated the value of its proximity. Based on. Replacement parts being literally at hand and town staff can drive to get to them, saving us an expense over time that's rather significant. And therefore that would perhaps address the. Pricing difference. With that in mind, is there a motion to accept the bid? From Catoctin Lighting Services?
I have another question. I'm sorry.
Are we going with ten foot or twelve foot?
Sorry, you need both. So that.
I thought we, yeah.
Oh, there's two different heights depending on where it goes.
Correct.
Okay. Um.
We'll hold, we'll hold the motion. Go ahead.
Oh, I had a question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, did we, did we figure out for sure where we were going to come up with the extra thirty-eight thousand? Was it indeed coming from?
So what it will come from would be the budget transfers at the end of, once the audit is completed with fiscal year. Twenty-three. It would be a recommended transfer for that because if we wait for the strategic cubi acts leftover, then you've got to wait a whole year for that audit to finish. So it would be general fund revenue that would have been left over from fiscal year twenty-three. That the board can then designate to this project.
Okay, so is there a recommendation to accept the bid from Catoctin Lighting Services Incorporated from Thurmont, Maryland? And the total sum?
Is that the two sixty-six, one forty?
Okay, two six six, one forty, is it? All right. So therefore, in the amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and forty dollars? Anyone willing to make that motion? Thank you, sir. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. Is her second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion related to this item? Hearing none, all in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Anybody against, please say nay.
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 Thank you. All right. So motion carries three to two. Commissioners Davis, Sweeney, O'Donnell in favor. Commissioner Ritz and Commissioner Bowman Pollard against. Thank you. Staff, we turn to you now for the agenda for our October meeting.
For. The October second town meeting, number one would be for consideration proclamation honoring Mayor Donald N. Briggs. Number two will be the swearing in of the mayor. Number three would be swearing in of the new commissioner. Number four, for consideration proclamation declaring October twenty twenty-three breast cancer awareness month. Number four, for consideration response to request by Peter Custos to initiate the annexation process of the Rodney McNair property. Number five. Approval of rules of procedure for community legacy grant program for the Sustainable Communities Work Group for consideration.
Did you say Rodney McNair?
Yes, Rodney McNair, M C N A I R.
Thanks.
It's along North Seton Avenue, basically behind Silo Hill currently. Does that make sense?
It would connect between, yes, he's correct, between North Seton and Silo Hill.
Um. If you go straight up Silo Hill.
Right behind like spikes and all that.
Where the, the alarm system is.
Any administrative business items?
No.
Can you tell us what, what's he wanted that for commercial or?
Basically, the conversation, we've had one conversation with him. He would like the town to initiate the annexation process on his behalf. But he is interested in doing whatever the town would like to put in there, whether it's a mixed use, whether it's affordable housing.
That's different.
He, he basically wants to work with the town. So I think the options are wide open for what the towns wants and needs are. And then, I mean, one of the, one of the absolutes is the connector road from North Seton to. And then, I mean, one of the, one of the absolutes is the connector road from North Seaton to Silo Hill Parkway.
I have a question for you before we end. The, how long has it been since we got um any, paid for any water from the mountain?
So I have to go back through my notes, but I believe this is the
Second or third, I think.
So it's been on my manager's report, two months, I just gave you July's, June, we did half the June. So we haven't paid July or August and then we won't do September.
So we do have money back for that?
So we are not paying for it, so we, we, we usually write a check to the mount. If it's not monthly, it's quarterly for the water usage, um, we have not made a payment since we uh ceased water usage.
Do you know what the payments were usually?
Usually, it, it ends up being about twelve thousand five hundred a year. Um, and this would have been shut off right in June. So more than likely, as we go forward, there may not be any expenses related to that in the water fund for the purchase of water.
So that'd be extra money for the general fund at the end too, right?
No, that will be, that's water fund money.
Okay, I was wondering, I was just wondering where the money goes to.
The, the bad part about that, that cuts off our emergency supply too, if we would have a major failure on the mountain.
Right.
That was always our backup and the same for the mountain, if they would have a major failure, we could reverse it.
Is there an update on that?
I have not gotten any update from the mount, um, I know the state is putting money, grant money out for municipalities and other agencies to correct their P-FAS problem, um, I'll probably reach back out to them probably at the end of this month to see where they are, but it's going to be a long process, I wouldn't anticipate any, any headway for a while.
So last Mon- Monday, two weeks ago, I sat with uh President Trainer for about an hour and this was one of the things was brought up and he wanted to emphasize that what they're looking at to address the forever chemical piece that they're investigating. He described it as a moving target and that they are putting serious resources toward whatever it's going to take to modify it, to, to bring it up to acceptable level.
EPA and MD should be putting out guidelines on, on levels and restrictions and all of that here with probably by the end of the year was the last that I had heard.
They're still using that water at Mount Mary's or they shut that part off?
I believe they shut that part off, I believe, I don't, I don't know for sure.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions for staff before we move forward?
I have two, um, unless it's included with, with the agenda, I didn't hear um, after the mayor and new commissioner sworn in, um, the board reorganizes.
Yeah, so I had a discussion with the current mayor, um, and the town clerk. The problem being, you only have four commissioners until the next meeting in November. Because one of your current commissioners will become mayor, which one will leave the seat vacant for the mayor and board to appoint.
Interesting.
Another commissioner, so allowing the new mayor to get his feet wet and then decide um who the next appointment will be. It, I felt it was the best interest and the mayor did to wait for the reorganization, because you only have four.
Yeah.
And Mr. Ritz, the bad news is Mr. Davis and I agreed it's going to be you.
I, I.
It's a horrible joke.
I laughed at all your jokes, but not that one.
All right, I understand.
Okay, so the next, what the next one was, and this is just a, a formality, but um, I, I, I know that the, the mayor wasn't here tonight and there was a proclamation wherein all the commissioners were to sign that. Are you going to wait until post-election to put the new commissioner on that, or would you like me to come in?
I would like you to come in, you should be here anyway.
Well, I will.
Okay, so.
But I probably won't hang out to the end of the meeting.
What we can do is if everybody gives Sabrina five minutes, she can change the date on the current proclamation and everybody can sign it tonight and that way we can present the mayor with a signed proclamation.
That sounds good.
Yours will have to wait till next week, or next uh meeting.
Well, it doesn't have everybody on it.
I gotta get the mayor to sign it.
Well, yeah, but that's fine. No, there's no, no rush on that.
Okay.
Wait, when you bail, you bail, I'm not waiting around for the rest of this meeting, I'm out of here.
It's got a golf date.
Historically.
I was going to take you for a beer afterwards, but the.
Historically, usually the commissioner leaves after their comments.
I vaguely remember Kurt, Commissioner Burns running out the door.
And I think he uh whispered with a little bit of a tone, good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, any other items for staff? All right, so, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented for the October second, twenty twenty-three meeting? Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you, motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palat. Any other comments, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second for Commissioner Bowman-Palat's motion?
Like, go ahead, could be your.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The meeting ends at nine thirty-seven.